Okay, are we ready? Okay. I am calling this planning commission meeting to order at 6:00 PM on July 25th. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the City of Independence, I welcome each of you in attendance, as well as those of you who are watching this meeting on Channel 7. For those of you who are unfamiliar with our meetings, it is the responsibility of Commission to hold public hearings and make recommendations to the Independence City Council on matters relating to zoning and land use changes within the city. We also consider and make decisions on flats, special use permits, and other issues, as well as changes in codes and policies that relate to city planning. So before we begin, I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City staff, will you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Here.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Here.
And Chairman McLean.
Here. Thank you. For those of you who wish to speak tonight, please remember to address all comments and questions to the Chair and keep your comments brief and on point. If you agree with a previous comment, simply indicate your agreement and move on. To expedite tonight's meeting, I'll ask those of you who wish to testify, or even think you might want to testify, to stand up and please be sworn in. Pardon? Yes. Yes. So will you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay. First thing on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to pull a case 23-600-02.
Is there a second?
They are. Were you?
I don't think so. There, we don't have a second.
Do you need a second?
You need a second. No second, Madam Chair.
Yeah. Okay. So I will take a motion. Have you all had a chance to look at the meetings, or the meeting minutes, I should say?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that consent agenda be accepted as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Staff, we're ready for roll.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
No. I don't know what's going on. I'm just having, I'm at a loss here because I asked the pool one to be talked about. I can't get that happen off the consent agenda. I mean, I'm guessing that's on the consent agenda because that's listed below. Is that true or not?
The minutes are the only thing on the consent.
Oh, so case 23-600 is not on the? That's just what I, I thought it was on the consent agenda. Look.
It is a part of the consent.
Oh, yes, it is. Okay.
But the motion did not receive a second. And there's a, there's a motion on the floor.
Okay.
That has been seconded. So we're doing roll call.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So.
No.
Roll call.
So Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
No.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. The consent agenda with the, containing the minutes in case 23-600-02 has been approved. Okay. Public hearings, case number 23-100-18, a rezoning of 923, 924, 925, and 926 North Main Street. A request by the City of Independence to rezone. Wait a minute. I skipped ahead. Case number 23-100-19 has asked to continue their case.
Correct.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Which one was the second? You both said it.
She beat Virginia. I'm sorry. You gotta be faster.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit. Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 23-100-19, rezoning of 704 North Pearl Street, has been continued. And it'll be continued to the August 8th meeting. Okay, now.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I'm still at a loss here. When somebody asks the pool one to be talked about, it's not to be voted on.
It requires a motion and a second.
Because I've always seen others, they just said, pull, pull the, to be talked about.
I think it requires a motion and a second.
Counselor? You don't know for sure?
I don't know. I'm gonna ask you.
Okay.
That has been the standard protocol in all the years that I've been on this commission. That matter is settled.
Yeah, I don't think.
There was a motion, there was a second, and it was voted, roll call. The consent carried. We need to move forward, sir.
Okay. I was just questioning it. I mean, I wasn't like.
We'll talk about sidebar on that afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it later, but that's my recollection is that we then had to vote on it to move it, and then we talked about it as a separate case, is my recent memory. Okay. Case number 23-100-18, rezoning of 923, 925, 924, and 926 North Main Street, request by the City of Independence to rezone these properties from C2, which is general commercial, to R6, which is single-family residential. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
Getting this set up. This is the vicinity map for the area just south of where Maine intersects with US 24 Highway between Nolan Road and the interchange going to the Truman Library. The particular lots we're talking about are 923, 924, 925, and 926 North Main. The applicant is the city. Originally, the applicant was 923, and looking at the situation, we saw that that would, of course, if that lot was rezoned, it would be isolated from the others zoned. See, or would have C2 zoning around it. And it made sense that all four of those houses in the neighborhood be done as a city-initiated rezoning collectively, as we've talked about before, systematically dealing with these issues one by one. So this would rezone these four lots from C2 to R6. So you can see the area we're speaking of here. There are four lots adjacent to actually an area zoned R12, but the area to the south is functionally single-family homes, a single-family neighborhood. And here's another look at those four lots. The comprehensive plan actually shows the penetration of single-family going another house down to the south. And actually, that orange color is for a mixed use that reflects being closer to the square area or in the direction there of. The yellow color is residential neighborhood, and that is what the comprehensive plan envisions these properties to be, residential in nature. And so. So here's an aerial of those single-family homes that lie immediately south of used car lots to the north. And there's also a shopping center that lies to the west, a strip, small strip center. And then more single-family homes directly to the east and to the south here, as well as the water tower for the city. The requests by the City of Independence is to rezone properties at 923, 924, and 925, and 926 North Main Street, from C2, general commercial, to R6, single-family residential. C2 properties in the area have been commercial for a long time. Prior, it was called C3, another commercial designation, but it's been commercial. The properties included in this rezoning are part of a cluster of single-family uses abiding commercial uses along US 24 Highway Corridor that are currently zoned C2. Rezoning the area to R6 will reinforce the single-family nature of the existing neighborhood. Rezoning the legal non-conforming single-family properties will make them more marketable because non-cash buyers that require mortgages will have less difficulty getting bank financing. Further, without the rezoning, existing properties could lose their single-family uses if unoccupied for more than six months. So as far as the background, the physical characteristics of these properties, the neighborhood is made up of a mix of architectural styles from the middle 20th century. Single-family residents there appear to be in relatively good condition. To the north of the properties are used car lots and as well as a former motorcycle shop there on the north side of 24, and they're all zoned C2. Abiding to the west, of course, again, like I said, is the strip center, and then it's residential surrounding to the south and the east. The application is keeping within the measures of success for improved housing conditions and to, quote, "increase median value of owner-occupied housing units." And that is how it's consistent with the strategic plan. Going along with that, the comprehensive plans guiding land use principles, given the current designation of the property there, the plan recommends residential neighborhoods for uses on this site. The guiding principle most consistent with this is to maintain housing stock within established neighborhoods. As far as subarea plans that cover this vicinity, it is located within what is designated as the downtown redevelopment area. As far as the zoning, of course, R6, single-family zoning classification allows for not only single-family dwellings, but also various uses like schools, churches, government facilities, cemeteries, daycare. Currently, the properties, zone C2, allow for the broad variety of different commercial uses from retail to office, restaurants, banks, businesses, business services, personal services, hotels, government facilities, churches, entertainment facilities, and medical uses. These properties, although there are some historic homes in the area, there's nothing that's designated right there immediate, and there's not anything historic or archaeologically significant that we know of on the property. Public utilities being a long-established residential neighborhood, all the utility services are, of course, existing. This area is not in a floodplain, and it's not in a street buffer zoned area either. There are no public improvements intended for the, or that would be required for this action, and no CIP investments have been identified for this portion of Main Street at this time. So the, starting on the northeast, this is one of the homes. So you've got that car lot there on the north, there on the left side. And then here's a home adjacent to the southeast. And then, of course, that wire tower I was talking about. So we're talking about the house on the right here, as well as the next one there. They're both across from the white houses we were just looking at. And then there's the other car lot that's there to the north that has the building on it. And the commercial businesses, more car lots, of course, across 24 Highway off in the distance. And then this is a better view of that northeast car lot, or overflow, I guess, for the car lot across the street. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning and ready to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff before I open it up to the public?
Would it be in essence a summary that the city acted to the good of these residents, wherein they would have incurred a fee to have it rezoned? This rezoning makes it easier for these app, well, not applicants, these residents to, to get insurance in the event they have a mortgage. And therefore, the natural order of this, this is a good thing.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anybody here who would like to speak against this case? Sure. So if you want to stand up and raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the whole truth to this commission? If so, say I do. Thank you. You can come on up and just state your name and your address for the record. Thanks for being patient.
Do I need to push anything?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Kristen Childers, and I live at 917 North Main.
Is it mic on? See if the bing them, see that? Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Sorry. It's a whole thing.
That's okay. I'm Kristen Childers, and I live at 917 North Main, so I am their neighbors, and I am definitely for this. I don't want a commercial property. I know what could happen with that being next door, and I do live in kind of, it's not technically historical, but my house is actually owned by the woman who settled Kelly Heights, Kelly Polly, and I have the original deeds to the house. So for me, it's really important that the neighborhood kind of stays intact as like a single-family neighborhood. I'd hate to see commercial properties come in and park more cars next door.
That's very cool, that you have that.
So, yes, I approve them being residential.
Thank you. So I need to swear you in also. Do you both want to talk? Okay. If you both raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do. Thank you. And then just state your name and your address.
Thomas Van Meter, 925 North Main. In favor of this, it's actually my father's house. I'm trying to liquidate his assets and sell the property, and I've come into a glitch with it being commercial property, and hopefully that you guys zone it back so that I can, you know, get his assets sold for him. So hopefully you approve it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry for your loss.
Hello. My name is Andrew Davis. I reside at 923 North Main Street. I bought the property in June of 2021, and it wasn't until my neighbor at 925 was trying to sell us that turned up to notice that my property was zoned for commercial because that didn't come up at all when I filed for a mortgage with my bank. And it's kind of weird that that didn't pop up then, and if it did change during that time, that didn't receive any notice. It's like, it's pretty obvious that people live in these homes, so it's weird to hear that these are zoned for commercial when people are actually living in it. So I'd hate to have to try to sell it to somebody who wants to understand when I have a mortgage, because when I bought in 2021, it was easier to own a mortgage than trying to rent anywhere, even like some of the one-bedroom apartment houses. So I'd just like to keep present of like, full of here in Independence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none, the public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, any more questions or to entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
In the matter of case 23-100-118, rezoning at 923, 924, 925, and 926 North Main, I move would be approved for this change in zoning from C2, general commercial, to R6, general, single-family residential.
I second. Thank you. And we're ready for a vote. Heather Wiley.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 23-100-18 has been approved. Thank you. Okay. Next case, case number 23-410, short-term rental at 5,000 South Chrisler Avenue. Staff, will you give us a report, please?
All right. This is for case 23-410. It's a property at 5,000 South Chrisler Avenue for a short-term rental. The applicant is Amy Bingham. So here is a map showing the nearby short-term rentals in the area. And here is an aerial photograph of the property. This is the floor plan provided by the applicant. As you can see, there are three bedrooms, one bath, a kitchen, and then the basement, which is not going to be used as a bedroom. Here's the parking plan as provided by the applicant. There is a two-car garage and a large driveway. They've indicated that two vehicles, two additional vehicles could park here. However, their driveway is large, and a few more than that could also fit. Here is the fire evacuation plan provided by the applicant. To get into the background of this application, Amy Bingham seeks the approval of a home business permit to operate a short-term rental at 5,000 South Chrisler Avenue. Property history is that the house was built in 1951. It was built as a single-family home and continues to be a single-family home in use and design. The physical characteristics of the property are that the property is a 1,093-square-foot light blue, 1,093-square-foot lot with a light blue, single-story, single-family residence. Excuse me. It is a 1,093-square-foot light blue, single-story, single-family residence, and it lies on a 40,063-square-foot lot. The house has three bedrooms, a living room, a kitchen, a bathroom, and the home also has a basement, but the applicant has indicated that will not be used for a bedroom for the short-term rental. Behind the home lies a shed that matches the house in color and material. And lastly, the home and all accessory buildings are situated on the north half of the property, while the south half has the appearance of a vacant lot, although the grass is mowed and well-maintained. The characteristics of the area are that the surrounding single-family neighborhood are similar in features and designs and size. The adjacent property to the north has a large row of trees that create a physical barrier between the two properties, and most of the houses are post-World War II ranch-style houses, and there are no curbs or sidewalks along the street. Regarding parking, as I mentioned, the property has a two-car wide driveway that leads to an attached garage that can accommodate two vehicles. As I calculated, more than six cars could be parked on the driveway, including two in the garage. This location is not suited for street parking, and given the large amount of driveway space, this should not be an issue. As far as unruly guests and security, all guests will be required to fill out a guest verification form and be verified before being allowed to stay at the property. Devices will be installed to monitor the noise level, occupancy, motion, and the temperature of the home, and there will be a person that lives in the area called the regional coordinator that will be on call 24 hours a day and be available to address any issues. So regarding the requirements, for noise monitoring, the applicant will install noise monitoring system that will notify them if the decibel level is above 85 decibels for more than five continuous minutes. Regarding trash removal, trash pickup service is scheduled for a weekly pickup, although the applicant does not know the name of the company that will provide the service at this time. Regarding the property listings, the property will be listed on Airbnb and VRBO in addition to a direct booking website. As far as the business operations and security, the regional coordinator will be responsible for site security while nightly, and that should be a capital N, is responsible for the general business operations, including screening customers, coordinating bookings, and nightly is the company for which the applicant works. Regarding the city's short-term rental checklist, the form was completed by the applicant, covering licensing, future inspections, insurance, onsite information posting, and so forth. Regarding fire safety, a fire evacuation plan has been submitted along with four plans for the house. The fire escape plan must also be posted per code requirement. And regarding the inspection, the property has been inspected by the fire. And regarding the inspection, the property has been inspected by the fire inspector and passed the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspections. And as there are no other short-term rentals in this area, the application follows the density limitations of the city code. So here are the photos of the property. This is, uh, looking directly on to the property facing west. So this is, if you turn slightly right, this is looking north. That should be northwest, looking at the property to the north. This is looking north, uh, up Chrisler. This is looking northeast across the street. This is looking directly across from the house. And this is looking southeast across Chrisler. And this is looking south down the street. And then this is looking, again, should be southwest. And you can see the, the, what appears to be a vacant lot, although it's not, and the neighboring property. This is also a view, just an additional view of the house. And this kind of gives a better view of the backyard. Regarding the recommendations, staff recommends approval of the short-term rental with the following conditions. That the short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article 3, Chapter 5 of the city code. The occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. Number two, the business must comply with all safety and other standards established by Section 14, 420 of the city code. Number three, the maximum, maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to eight persons. Number four, the maximum, maximum number of bedrooms, uh, shall be four. And number five, the noise monitoring system shall be installed and activated. The Good Neighbor Guidelines, evacuation plans, and other notices must be properly posted prior to the approval of the business license. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions before we bring the applicant up?
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Our Chair. You said in the recommendations or the conditions that no more than four bedrooms and eight people. Without the basement, there's only three bedrooms. So should that not be amended to six and three bedrooms?
I might ask Brian to answer that.
I suppose, let's look back at the, I'm, I'm not real familiar with the number of bedrooms with this case. So we've got, you know, three standard bedrooms and then we have, yeah. That would, you, he, that would be the case, as you pointed out. So, um, certainly we'd have to limit the bedrooms to three, although we could say and limit adults to six, definitely, so.
Yeah, my concern would be the basement would get used when it's clearly not to be a part of this.
Yeah, so I would, I would, you might want to change three to be, uh, limited to, should be limited to eight persons, six adults, and then do three bedrooms.
Thank you.
Good catch. Okay, any other questions before we bring the applicant up? Will the applicant come forward and state your name and your address?
Good evening. My name is Amy Bingham. I guess my address would be the 5,000 Chrisler. I'm actually based in Springfield. Um, I'm the owner of the property management company called Knightley that is requesting, am I not talking loud enough? I'm sorry.
A little bit louder.
Okay, that is requesting this approval. Um, to address your bedroom issue, there is no intention to put a bedroom in that downstairs. In fact, I'm going to lock that door so it's not accessible because it's got those like long, weird, super skinny basement stairs. So we don't want any liability in that area. So we're going to lock that off completely. The access from the downstairs and from the upstairs. So we don't have to worry about that. I just wanted to address a couple of things that sometimes come up as far as, because I'm not local. We do have the regional coordinator. That is generally just a person that I can call anytime. Then I will have my cleaner that will also be on call. And then I will have a handyman that will also be on call. So if I can't reach one, I will have backups. Uh, while I'm here, I'm staying the night at the property, doing some research. I will try to go and meet my neighbors and try to make sure that everyone has my contact information so that there is ever an issue, they have any problems. They know I'm a person. I'm not just some company that they can call me if they have any problems with anything. Before they reach out to police or anything like that, we'd rather solve the issue. I'd rather be able to message, message the guests and resolve it peacefully. Because we want our neighbors to be happy, for sure. We do have trash services in place. We also have a mowing company that is in place right now, taking care of everything. Um, and the other is the guest verification. So Airbnb and VRBO do a basic guest verification. We have a third party that after the, the guest book, they now have to go through our third-party guest verification that, um, it goes through, it checks against their internal system to make sure that they haven't gone through the system before and been kicked back and been denied. They check that the phone number is not a burner phone. They check that the email is deliverable. They look for any linked online profiles. They look for data breaches. And it also checks the U.S. Sex Offender Registry. So when that comes back, if we see any red flags, we can then not approve that booking and we can cancel that. So we're really trying to keep, not only protect our investors' assets, the house, but we want to protect the neighbors also. Um, I think, I think that was all. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you, um, we need to have your real address for the record, not the property address.
Oh, okay, my, my personal residence? Okay, 688 State Highway KK, Portland, Missouri.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner, do you have any questions?
Ma'am Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, ma'am, you said you had people, how close are they in response time to any problems? What's, that's the response time? What's the response time?
Uh, currently I have one on deck. I'm looking for my cleaner and I'm looking for my handyman currently. But I have one on deck. Her name is Olivia and she lives 17 minutes away.
Okay. Uh, now, on to the monitoring systems, the noise. Uh, you guys got that set up and everything?
I will have it set up before we go live.
Okay, now, did I hear something about you guys are going to put in, uh, video surveillance also? Or not?
No.
Outside?
No, hadn't planned on that.
Okay, some, some do. That way they can keep track of what's going on outside, so I didn't know.
The homeowner has not requested that. If the homeowner already has it in place or requests to do that, then we will, but generally not.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
And I just wanted to double-check and make sure that you understand we're going to change the recommendations to three rooms?
Yeah.
And eight people, but six adults?
Yes.
Okay.
And we probably won't allow any more than four cars in that driveway anyway, even though there's six available because we don't, when you have that many cars and you have to start moving and people are coming and going and they're going to park on the road. And we will probably limit that to four anyway.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone here to speak for this case? Is there anyone here to speak against this case? Hearing none, the public portion of this hearing is closed. Commissioners, any more discussion, questions, or I'd entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move we approve case 23-40-10, short-term rental, 5,000 South Chris, Chrisler Avenue. With, in the recommendations, that it be three-bedroom, six people, two kids.
Thank you.
And other, other what?
Other what?
Oh, and other recommendation. Is there something else I missed? I don't know.
I second.
Bedroom, three? Okay. And we're ready for roll call. For the vote, either one.
We're ready. Is that what you said?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
And Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number 23-400-10 has been approved. Thank you for coming. Good luck. Okay, next case, number 23-175-03, UDO Amendment Number 56 for adult businesses. Staff, will you give us a report?
Topic you've all been waiting for, I'm sure. Yeah, exactly. So, adult businesses, all right. So March of this year, City Council had asked staff to take a look at our current, uh, adult business ordinance, which is actually part of Chapter 5, Article 17, under our Business and Occupational License Code. Um, and we did do that. Uh, since that chapter of that code is actually not part of the UDO, that portion of the ordinance actually gets debated by City Council, not actually Planning Commission. However, I will go over some of the basic changes that we have looked at under that code that basically brought us here today for what will need to be updated in the UDO. So after staff had taken a look at some of our neighboring cities, one of the things that we recognized is that our code was a bit outdated. It, in general terms, it didn't really address, so we did address things like adult bookstores, different types of parlors, arcades, nudity, that type of thing with pornographic materials. But we didn't really address, um, the, the, um, retail sales portion of it. And so part of this update addresses that and kind of brings them all together into adult businesses. Uh, the update also includes more clear and expanded definitions of different types of adult businesses. And, um, it updates the licensing requirements as well. Uh, the application approval and disapproval process has been outlined more clearly in this, um, proposed update. And then it also clarifies things like separation from schools and churches and, um, uh, public parks and residentially zoned areas. Um, it also outlines the distance that it has to be from another adult business and/or businesses that sell alcohol. Uh, the updates also include standards of conduct for adult-type businesses. And, um, it requires things like a manager must be on-site, uh, the entire time that the business is open. Um, we also include in this proposed update the suspension, revocation, and non-renewal process that, uh, an applicant would have to go through for obtaining a license to operate an adult business. Uh, lastly, and this is what brings us here today, is the portion of this code would require our, uh, UDO in, in making anybody who's wanting to operate a, an adult-type business to obtain a special use permit. Um, and that would actually be under our Chapter 14, Article 3, Section 14, 301 of our Office and Commercial District, um, zoning UDO. And so in there, um, in your packet, you'll see really what we're, what we're looking at tonight is that, um, code section that has a chart that basically talks about the C2, uh, which is what, uh, the zoning would be allowed for these adult-type businesses to have a special use permit that would then come before this commission and then go to council. So with that, that is all I have on, um, this particular reporting.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So now where, is there a restriction on the number of adult entertainment businesses in our city limits?
Not a, not a limit, but just a special use permit requirement. But they do, again, we, we've updated the distances between them. So that in and of itself somewhat limits the number without actually having an explicit cap.
Any idea on what that number would be based on footage?
So what was proposed and understand, so this actually went to council. Council kind of sent it back to staff and we're, we're making some revisions. But what was originally proposed was 1,200 feet from any churches, schools, daycare centers, residential zone districts, and then 1,000 feet from any, um, other adult businesses or businesses that sell alcohol.
Any idea why there was not a limitation put in in total number when we do that for tattoo potters, et cetera?
It was not something that we had seen that was part of any other jurisdictions. It wasn't, it wasn't something that we talked about actually doing for this particular type of business. But, I mean, that...
So it follows similar rules and similar cities around us?
Yeah, and the goal was to try to be a little bit more in line with, um, many of our other jurisdictions who had actually updated, uh, their adult business codes.
Do you know if any of those have changed it and yet have seen an influx of adult businesses?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there anyone here to speak for this case? Is there anyone here to speak against this case? Hearing none, the public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, any more questions? And or I'd entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
In the matter of case 23-175-03, UDO Amendment Number 56, Adult Businesses, I move that the city had proposed Amendment Number 56 of the UD, Unified Development ordinance pertaining to adult business be approved as presented.
Please, your second. I second. Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
And Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number 23-175-03 has been approved. We're done. Right? Me too. Speedy, speedy.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Counselor found an answer.
Oh, good.
So, the City Council, uh, a City member can remove the, uh, I mean, uh, consent agenda on her own. And unless this body has a document that will require a motion to second. Unless you guys follow the City Council rules, which I would do if that would require.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Rick? Sorry. So we're going to be, these, um, we're going to be seeing these special use permits for adult businesses here?
Yes, anything that would go through would have to be a special use permit that would come before Planning Commission for a recommendation to council.
Got it. Anything else we need to know before August 8th? It's a very special day. No, it's Virginia's birthday.
I was gonna say, staff has nothing to add.
We're all in that category, but that's okay. Okay, we are adjourned at 6:19.